We didn't vote on it, did we? So all those in favor to come out have closed. And do we have any opposed? Thank you, eight and oh. All right, coming out of close, we have two motions. Counselor Chisen would like to, on twelve point one, would like to direct administration to pursue a lease with Blue Heron Estates Community League for county facilities within Northeast fourteen sixty six eighteen, West of the Fourth, seven nine two zero nine three six two M R, and eight one two one seven one four one five five M S R, and to direct administration to contact school boards and schedule a public hearing as required to lease seven nine two zero nine three six two M R and eight one two one seven one four one five five M S R, and to direct administration to provide Blue Heron Estates Community League with an impromptu grant annually in the amount of the two thousand and twenty five value of the M O A upon receiving an application annually, and that upon signing the lease, Blue Heron Estates Community League be added under four point five point six of policy six two one five, and the M O A with Blue Heron Estates Community League be canceled. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you, that's eight and oh. And with regards to item twelve point three, Deputy Reed Minz would like to direct administration to move forward with a purchase agreement in the amount of five hundred sixty five thousand dollars for the property on the east portion of Southeast ten sixty three twenty three, west of the Fourth. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? No opposed, eight and oh, thank you very much. And we will recess for lunch, will take thirty minutes, so if we can return please at five to one.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Are we ready to go? Yep, we're good to go. Awesome. Thank you. We're back from lunch and we are returning to item six point, pardon me, seven point five, the 2026 draft operating in capital budgets. And I know we took a little hiatus there, but we'll turn the floor back over to Director Daly, please. Daly. I think the presentation will be coming up soon on screen. That's okay. No worries. Please, yeah. Alrighty. There we are. Yep.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, councilors. So just finish off the presentation and then I guess we'll get into the the detail of each departmental budget. Thank you. So I finished off with Bart.
Just because we're on this page before we jump ahead, there's a comment on here on the fourth line down that we've included a full-time handy bus driver. And I thought there was a policy that council approved all new positions. I didn't know if that applied or didn't, or I just, I know I was surprised by it when I saw it last time and I was that a, was that a council decision or did that not apply, that policy not apply?
I can't answer that. I don't know if there's a policy. I would have to go back and look. Maybe the C O might have some insight there.
We'll look into that and report back.
We'll go to the next slide. So continuing on with our 2026 proposed operating changes. Fire protection, there's an increase in transfer to reserve capital of 250,000. Fire protection decrease in emergency management due to end of grant funding 50,000. Infrastructure services increase in agriculture services for new position and transfer of large scale mowing program. Mowing program was reduced in road construction. So basically it was transferred from road construction over to the agricultural services of 535,000. And then in infrastructure services, overall decrease in common services, decrease in feasibility studies, decrease in pit management activities, decrease in repairs and maintenance, increase in vehicle and equipment rentals, increase in maintenance supplies, and, and this is offset by a lower 2026 revenue. So the total effect was 67,000. Continuing in infrastructure services, increase in recreation mainly due to increase in multiplex cost and recreation plan 460,000. Increase in road construction includes bridge repair move. Bridge repair was moved to operations, increased dust control and 1 million net revenue decrease for gross recovery. So the overall effect of 1.2 million. Infrastructure services increase in water services mainly due to $3 reduction in water rate 130,000. And infrastructure services increase in gravel road maintenance, including increasing gravel and changing gravel specification 589,000.
Were my missing counselor hall? Thank you.
I think there's a, I'm just wondering if the multiplex budget lines are up to date. I was trying to look back on emails, but I think.
The, the final, the last previous board meeting, I think it happened in October. The numbers changed. So those numbers, I think, I believe, as, as come to council before, they're not in this budget. The agreement that was made is in this budget, but not the numbers that they passed that their multiplex forward is not in this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, please go ahead. Thank you.
So final slide is proposed new positions for 2026. Infrastructure services agriculture assistant field man 110,000. And this 110,000 is included into proposed changes like it's built in. Fire protection regional fire smart coordinator two-year term. Salary and advertising is funded by grant. So the cost to the county would be 48,000. This is included in the fire protection previous changes. And then in, in term position, so there's a we applied for a grant for a finance in, in term position. It's an 18-month term. If successful, it would be, we would receive 62,500 from the grant. And we would, the county would have to cover 70,000. This amount is included in your detail, but not in the proposed, on the slide on the proposed operating changes. And that is the presentation. Is there any additional questions?
I don't see any, but I would like to say thank you again. This is great. Good information, well thought out. Budget that we're looking at so far. And I know I really appreciate all the effort that has been put into this. So thank you very much. I don't think council has any other further comments or questions. So we are at the stage where we are on page 115 of our agenda. And if everybody would like to, what we kind of did the last time was go through. We skipped past the budget summary, but we looked at each department just to kind of see if anybody has any questions or comments that they would like to make. And if there isn't any, we'll just keep going through the package. So we will start with administrative services on page 118. And just so, Council Dalek, we've just finished our presentation and we're on page 118 of our agenda package. And we're going to go through each department's budget and see if there's any comments or concerns or changes anybody would like to see. So we'll start again with administrative services. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss or bring forward? Perfect. Next one is on. Let me get there is ag services and that's on page 125 of our package. Is there any concerns, any questions? All right. Going, going, gone. Next one. And as everybody notices, there are change requests that are in here that explain some of the, the budgets. So hopefully everybody's had a chance to read those. We're looking at page 131, which is the airport. Anything here, folks? Alrighty, we're gonna keep going. Cemetery on page 134. Which is getting easier, isn't it? Awesome. All right, we have common services. I believe that one begins on page 136. This usually attracts a little bit of attention. This is easy, easy peasy. Did you want to have a look at that one? Common services, you're good.
I don't, I don't know if this is, sorry, please go ahead. Just with the cemetery budget. Is there any plans like to have something for people that don't want to get married, but the, a columbarium? Yes. Is there something in the future?
Um, just because I'm new and I don't know where this is all.
Sorry, what's the question?
Is there a plan for columbarium in any one of our cemeteries?
Oh, no, we'd have to look into that. It's not part of our level of service today. If we, I'm very familiar with those from other places. So if council wanted to do that, then we could look into that.
Right. So that would be a good spot for an RFD. Okay. Yep. Thank you. Is it okay?
Well, we, we did discuss it once a couple of years ago and yeah, decided against doing it because of the cost and the demand, I think.
I'm sorry. It's, it's difficult to hear.
We discussed it once a couple of years ago, and I, I think the Council Capitanic would probably be the best to speak on it, but I think that we didn't move ahead because of the cost and the demand.
It was for the Boyle, the municipal one in Boyle, if I'm not mistaken, but we can pull it out of the agenda pack, package from back then and give you some information. Okay, thank you. Awesome. We're just gonna make a note to that. Okay. All right. So we're back to common services, going, going, gone here pretty quick. Okay, community transportation, which is on page 141 of your package. Anything here? This is awesome. I think that was already hit hard. Economic development, page 144. Okay. We're going to move to page 146, emergency management and Highway 63 emergency services. Pretty quiet. We will move to page 149 enforcement services. Please go ahead. Council Chisen.
Enforcement services, again. I don't know what this all entails. But just some of the issues that with like even subdivisions and they have certain guidelines that to build and nothing's being enforced. So now people just can put 10 trailers, like the mobile trailers on a lot, and yet everybody else has complied. That would be an enforcement issue. And do we, do we as a county, do we enforce this? Because it's been kind of a complaint. So I'm just wondering, like, do our Athabasca County enforcement officers, do they go out and enforce all this?
Madam Chair, that'd be a great topic of discussion. I think last council discussed enforcement many times, I believe, even before I arrived was what level enforcement do you want? And council never arrived at a consensus as to as to adopt a policy. Let's put it that way. I think there was some that would have liked more active enforcement and some that believed we should only be reacting to complaints. And so is that fair, Madam Chair?
It's very fair. Yes, it's, we're primarily complaint based. And there was definite conversation about, you know, compliance officers and being a little more, you know, when you see it, deal with it type scenario, but it didn't pan out to go any further than the conversation.
It certainly would be a good topic for strat planning, strategic planning for council to say, is this an area that needs more attention? Absolutely.
Thank you. Yep. Alrighty, anybody? Yeah, please go ahead. Counselor.
Just wondering on page 149, 2262 rental vehicle equipment. We had nothing at 25 and all of a sudden we're sitting there with 24,000. Is that for a new vehicle or lease? A lease or what?
Madam Chair, Deputy Baysman, that's lease on a truck.
Lease on a truck. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. The next item up is facilities on page 152. Is there anything there for anybody? Alrighty, the next one is on page 154, I believe, yeah, 154, which is F C S S. And we'll keep on going. The next item up is 150, on page 158, fire protection services. This is getting easy. It's a big one. And again, there's a few budget change request forms there for folks to see what was going on there. Last chance. Okay, page 170, the G I S services. Well, this is a great budget. Human resources and safety, page 172. Okay, page 175 legislative. That's us. That's us. Yep. Any questions on here? Okay, the library board, page 178. Okay, planning and development, page 180. Oh my goodness. Alrighty, page 183, we have the recreation services. And I'm just, I may have skipped by it. I can never seem to find trails. Which department? I thought it would be under recreation services, but I could be wrong. I know there was $10,000 set aside for it, but I can't remember which department it fits under.
Madam Chair, on page 185, under line 2755. So page 185. And then under 2755. So page one eighty-five and then under twenty-seven fifty-five, transfer to organizations.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. So I was just curious, we had discussed a little bit about um uh some concerns on some weed, uh tansey, tansey issues on the trail between uh Collington and Athabasca. I was just curious, the extra five thousand that's here for, it's for admin costs, that would not cover weed control, would it? I'm guessing no, just.
Madam Chair, I'd have to look into that. I don't really know. I, I don't recall us budgeting for the tansey, but I can look up what the last response was from our egg field.
Yeah, I don't think it was budgeted at all, so it was just a thought. Um, and I guess it would of course be a decision of council. If that would be something that um is of interest, but I'm not even sure what cost of weed control would be in that small section.
Wouldn't weed control be under the egg service board?
Kind of. Well, it all depends because this is for the specific trail, so I'm not sure where it would fit. So I guess it's something that we can bring back and have that conversation um through uh an RFD.
Okay.
Yeah. So let's check it out. Okay, page one eighty-seven is your road construction and maintenance. Road construction and maintenance. No conversation happening. Go ahead, councillor Jackson.
We seem to be rushing through this, so I'm like, oh my goodness, sorry. Um. Road construction and maintenance, of course, um. This is the budget that we are proposing, correct, but um have we kind of looked at like um more paving around in our area? Like, I don't really know what what's been identified in this budget, so like we're going so quickly through it, like are we just saying yes and then we're gonna come back with changes or like what? I'm sorry, I'm.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to start.
Thank you.
And then if Marshall wants to dive in, he can. Uh, the current budget proposes no new pavement. If council wants to add some, we'll take your direction. It's for the first time in years, we've actually included a line for maintenance of the existing pavement uh to the tune of one point five million, over one point five million. We're not sure when that was last budgeted, but we've got how many miles that needs maintenance and with Marshall sitting on about a ten-year plan to get us caught up on all the overlays and everything that needs to be done to maintain the current pavement, but otherwise, there's no new pavement proposed.
Yeah, councillor, uh CEO Beck is dead on. Uh, we do have a draft ten-year plan that council has not seen, so uh that's why I say it's draft. Um, but it is, it includes only uh priority of our existing infrastructure and ensuring that it is protected and maintained uh to a level that it needs to be. Uh, the current surfacing policy. Uh, I know that there's the previous, previous council has some concerns around it, and so I'm assuming there will be discussion during strategic planning or uh at some point in the new year around the surfacing policy. Uh, it's primarily focused on uh subdivisions right now. When you look at the criteria, you would have to be a multi-lot subdivision probably to meet the criteria of that policy. Uh, so whether council decides to change the policy and or change, you know, the uh I guess criteria associated for surfacing. Uh, and, and at that point, I'm assuming we would have a discussion of uh, you know, what we could afford moving forward. Every time you add one kilometer of surfaced road to the inventory, you have to add it to our maintenance. Everybody's at, but just reminding, so uh you increase both budgets. Not only are you paving something new or surfacing, if you choose an alternative uh structure, uh, you still need to maintain that moving forward. I, I would suggest it's the right thing to, how to do things. Don't, don't build stuff you can't afford to maintain. So I would suggest that's probably a strategic planning item as well, but this budget does not include any new surfacing. It's just maintaining existing.
So if I can put it out there, um budget is basically focusing on maintenance and repair. Of our current infrastructure before we concentrate on adding more.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well. I certainly think that, you know, we have a healthy budget. And uh, looks like we're gonna continue having a healthy budget. I think now is the start, at the time that we starting to add some, some pavements i- in our county. We haven't paved any roads for years and years. Uh, we should get into uh some type of a program and I'm just wondering if I could uh uh to ask administration to uh to get a cost on say eight kilometers of pavement.
Madam Chair, we're happy to. Um, it all depends on the road. If you're thinking of the one in particular, I think we got a cost two years ago. Uh, so um, it depends which, what's surfacing and everything else. Um, uh. And I can't recall that cost, but it was presented to council in draft budget for twenty twenty-four and, and wasn't, wasn't uh included. So um we did get a cost, a prelim, preliminary cost for that connector road, and so we could easily report that back to you. We, we did receive a cost.
Are we doing any collaboration with other municipalities in the area? Say Lakavish County.
Uh, I reported to council of a meeting I had with their CAO. And that was shared with council, so.
Well, uh, I'll, I'll be, I'll ask for a report or a cost on.
Yeah, I think it was in the twenty twenty-three budget, if I'm not mistaken. Was it twenty twenty-three?
No, I think it was twenty-four, cause I was here. I wasn't here for the twenty-three budget. I was here for the twenty-four budget.
What's gonna happen is other, other areas and divisions, there's, there's other areas that need paving as well, and the sooner we start, you know, we're gonna be one step ahead. Uh. You know, if we keep failing to do that or not being able to do that, uh, we're gonna run in trouble in a few, in a few years. Um. You know, you see, uh, wow. You know, I always go back to the Klein days when Klein cut everything back and uh wanted to balance the budget and stuff and uh we're paying for it now with uh no new hospitals, no new schools. Uh. It, it, it's easy to balance a bu, a budget if you don't do anything or but uh we've got to look, look out there, uh. You know, public interest, uh, interest and safety. So yeah, I, I'll ask for that uh cost.
Yeah, and, and I think too, it's going to be um really great when we finally get chance to sit down and I believe it's January, February, we'll be doing our strat planning. And then as, as Director Morton has been working extremely hard on a ten-year road plan as well. And so all of that will come together in, in full circle so that we will be able to make really good and informed decisions on exactly what you're referring to on, on making progress in these areas. Absolutely.
Well. Where have the years gone by? I remember twenty, twenty-five years ago, we were discussing this uh and we've never paved anything since. Uh, we, all we do is we discuss and we discuss, we have the strategic planning and, and nothing's happening. You know, we just, we gotta decide we're gonna do something or else decide we're doing nothing. You know, we've got to move ahead.
Yeah, thank you, understood.
And I know in the past too, there's been promises that, you know, pavement was gonna happen and to date hasn't happened. So again, if we could, if we're gonna do a strategic plan, at least we can start identifying these issues that we need to start paving and we need to start doing some of that stuff. And yes, we, we need the money to maintain it as well, but uh and correct, I mean maintenance is important and that's priority. But um if we could definitely take a look at what was promised before and hasn't yet been delivered, so as a county, so.
And, and I think now is the time, you know, our, our interest rates are low, our oil prices are low. I'm, I believe, I'll bet you our uh our paving uh will be a lot less now than it was several years ago when we had our high oil prices and uh and the interest rate was a little higher, so. I think now is the opportune time to, to start looking at things like that.
Thank you, councillor Cisio.
I've got a couple of questions. Uh, what is uh recovery revenue?
Uh, so basically what grocery recovery is, is our hourly rates on our internal equipment and what we bill other departments for. It, it's an internal transfer of cost. Uh, if we go do work for planning and development and we build the equipment to their budget, you know, their bu, budget gets billed for it and the revenue comes back. It it's really a net zero game when it's in the, if you look into the big overall budget, we as an administration do not care for this type of budgeting. And so we would like to get rid of it and we're working uh very diligently to do that. Uh, but it's really a net zero game. When you look at the overall budget, it it's really just internal transfers and it's exercise and fertility.
I've actually struggled with that. Oh, I got off, so I've actually struggled with that for quite a few years because I'm thinking, okay, so we, we have it, we spend it, we still have it. Where is it? Like, you know, is it, is it going into our reserves? Is it going into another budget or like? You know, I can understand if you hired somebody from the outside and you paid them, well, that's gone. But when you pay somebody from within, where did it go? Now, the other question I have, and that ties right in with this. Can you explain depreciation to me? It's my understanding that depreciation is a loss in value. So how does that become an expense here that we can actually put our fingers on and say, okay, here's the money right here. This is what we lost.
You go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer it. I hate that it shows up in a budget too, but it, it's important to note that it's a non-cash item. So it shows up as an expense, but in the overall cover page of, of the entire budget, it gets added back into everyone. It's a net, it's a zero. It's just an accounting thing.
Okay.
So we don't bill the taxpayer for depreciation.
No, but you see, the, the numbers that are there start adding up and get a bit confusing because it looks like we've got a three, three million dollar expense there where in fact it's just.
And I wish we could just add it in each page, which we could in the future. I'll let Jeff explain it instead of explaining it to.
Uh, CAO, uh, Mr. Beck was correct. Uh, it is for budgeting purposes, it is an expense and then we add it back. But when you do see the financial statements in April, you will not see depreciation added back. It's non-cash. But for the financial statements, when we uh when capital is also included for the bottom line, the value of our assets will depreciate over time. If you've got a piece of equipment that's gonna last ten years, the value is going down, so you will see the expense that's not added back. But for budgeting purposes, it's non-cash, so it is added back. But for financial statements, like when you see the income statement, it will not be added back. So for, for all intensive purposes, uh in budgeting, yes, it's added back. It's a no non-cash effect, so it's used basically, some cases to balance the, but you see people using it, uh, organizations using it to balance the budget. But then when you when you see the financials, which is a different thing, because this is like the budget variance reports, but when you actually see the income statement, you won't see depreciation added back, although it is a, it is on there as an expense. I don't know if that clarified.
It does, yeah, yeah. Like, what I'm also was gonna ask you is recapture depreciation, cause that's when the final numbers are actually calculated, correct? Like, if you sold something at the depreciated down and you got more money than you thought you were, that's recaptured depreciation, so then that's a different number again.
Uh, that's correct. If we, if we sold a piece of equipment that, say for example, we could have fully depreciated, but we actually made some money on it, uh, we could have a recapture or we could have a gain or a loss, depending what uh value we sold that for.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Good. Is there anybody else who would like to please councillor Hall?
I, I think uh we also need to think about the depreciation effects or the wearing out effects i- in terms of, you know, when we're using this equipment, we do need to be setting money aside in some way to replace it and, and some of that I think could be reflected through the depreciation category. We, we've talked a little bit about the need for, you know, increased maintenance through the email chains that have been going around over the last couple of weeks on our road infrastructure and so you know, be- before we get into lots of grand plans, I think we have to come back to um looking after the stuff we've got. And so I know there's a, a change request in here to go to a three-year gravel rotation. Um, is there more places administration can highlight for us where this increased focus on on maintenance of our existing road infrastructure is uh demonstrated in the budget?
So through the chair to councillor Hall, so some of the things that we've done is obviously is we're trying to add or change the, the cycle for the gravel. Um, I actually was on the phone with uh uh, but some, a training for uh organization that comes in to do uh greater training. So I was making sure that we had a training slot uh for next year, cause they're filled up. So we're gonna be doing some training of operators where we're bringing in qualified specialists to assist with that. Uh, we've changed our spec on gravel to help uh remove some of the fines in the bottom end of the gravel spec, which will coarsen it up some, uh make it you know, uh, provide us a better uh crust on the road where it'll shed water better. Uh, it won't be as muddy, uh, hopefully when it rains. Um, so those are all things that we're doing. Uh, and we've spent a lot of time talking with our operators on uh focusing on areas that I guess we as administrator, administration have uh with gravel roads and where we feel that we can improve. Uh, there's been a significant amount of time spent on trying to uh increase the operator's um knowledge of what the expectations are in relation to gravel road maintenance. Um, so I guess hopefully that answers your question, councillor Hall.
You know, we, we've also talked a little bit about the projects and I, I think, you know, for me, there's, there's no doubt that we need to have a discussion of the level of service that relates to what we're doing. And re- regarding our maintenance and also on how we prioritize new projects. And we, like, the nightmare for me is we all show up at the table with our three favorites and, 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 you know, try to negotiate it here. The first step is asking admin to, to work with council or to build on their own. In my opinion, a, a clear set of priorities and a way to rank our projects so that we can just rank the projects. And then once we know what they are, we can go out to people and be clear with them about your road is important, but it's number four and we have to work our way through them. But I, I really can't get behind us. Then I'm worried that we're gonna head down a path of they're all just picking our project and I think I think we really need a conversation about how we define those projects. Does it relate to maintenance? Does it relate to road counts? Does it relate to industry? Does it? And you know, we have the right admin team to come up with that. And then after all of that, if we want to start spending money, we've got to start talking about where the money comes from. This is still spend, spend, spend. And I'm, I'm like, you know, it's seems like it's been a race to get through the budget to get to page one eighty-seven, but I really have a question about can we challenge admin to, to say these are the priorities and talk about them as a group, if it's increased maintenance and all of that. But also how can we tighten up a little bit? Cause I'm not okay with a, with a two percent tax hike coming, come the spring. Until we've had a real thorough discussion about all the pieces inside. And, and I've said this before and I know we're not all have been here for as long. But we just keep adding and at some point we have to ask, if we're gonna add something, what are we gonna not do in order to do that? And I think we should have more discussion around.
Thank you, councillor Dalek.
Well, you know what? It's fine, it's fine for you to say that or anybody else to say that when they drive ten miles of pavement to work. Uh, I've got people, I've got school buses that can't make it through a road. I've got ambulance people that can't make it through a road. You know, what about these people? Sure, we can tighten. I don't wanna see no tax going up or whatever. You know, maybe we can cut back in some other areas and, and, and look at some major projects. So come on, we just can't let roads go like that, you know, they're just uh in a state of uh, you know, I don't even know if you could pave that road anymore. It's that far gone. You know, there's no money being put in there for a shoulder pull. There's no money putting in there uh for a lot more gravel. It, it just needs a total rebuild. And a total rebuild will go a long ways. Uh. And a total rebuild will go a long ways, uh, to help with the paving of that project, you know, now is the time we do it.
Thank you. And if I may weigh in as well.
If I can follow up though.
Sure.
I mean, I feel like I've been pretty clear about my own view that maintenance is important and we need to do it. But you know, I'd remind my colleague, there's more than one road in the county. And we need to figure out how they all come together and, and so maintenance matters. And when admin comes to us and says, here are my, our number one through three priorities. I want to be the guy that is first in line to put my hand up to support it. But we, we've got to figure out how we make those decisions. That's my point. It has to be in a way that's equitable and balanced across the whole county. And, um, and you're right, there are terrible roads in all districts and we have to work with the experts who are sitting at the end of the table here to figure out how we get after them.
And, and just before you, you, you start, um, and that's where I was getting at. When we have our strap plan, these are when we can sit down and discuss what our priorities are. When we have the road plan, that information will give us that data so that we're able to make those decisions on where the priorities sit and what works well and what council all agrees on. And so they've been working diligently on gathering that data, making that happen so that when we get to the table again, um, in doing our strap plan, we will have so much more information to be able to make an educated decision. And I really appreciate what's going on. I really appreciate, um, what's being said here today because we all are passionate about our roads. And we all know, as, as Councilor Hall said, every division has some issues on particular roads that everyone is struggling with. I know where yours is. I know where mine is, you know, and we're all in that same boat and our residents are asking for the same thing. And so we're working towards that. Um, would we like it done tomorrow? You bet. But unfortunately, that's not, it's not, not as easy to do that. Um, so I look forward to really getting into that conversation as soon as we can. We will have another chance of course, looking at this budget. And as Councilor Hall mentioned, we are going through it quite fast and it's basically because we've had it for a little bit of time that we have to sit down and actually go through it ahead of the meeting so that we can figure out where our questions are. Um, we have another chance to talk about it on December eleventh, um, in council. So it's not all, this is not a final by any means. We're not voting on the budget today. Okay. But go ahead, Councilor Dela.
Well, we talk about maintenance. Well, just how much maintenance can you do on a road? When you do maintenance on a road and two days later it's back to the same state it was. Go on, we just got to look at what's happening there. And the fact that we got no money to upgrade that road uh, this year, you know, it's, it's just not right. You know, I, you know, do a little homework and you know, I can carry on with my presentation next meeting.
I said a RFD coming our way, Mr. Dela. Wait, Councilor Stasia.
Was there just a rough estimate what it would cost to fix that segment he's talking about? My fear is that if it could be a safety issue here, and I'm not trying to promote it or anything like that. It's, uh, are we talking like millions and millions? Are we talking few hundred thousand? What are we talking?
No, no. Uh, as I recall, it was, uh, when it was shown to council in 2024, it was about 3.6 million.
To repave, upgrade and then repave.
And I don't know, we'd have to get a, a new estimate from our engineer right now. And
Right, okay.
So it was in the millions. Yeah.
I guess, uh, this brings up quite a conversation all of a sudden because what we've done, we're, we're asking for asphalt now. We're asking for pavement on certain roads and everything. And what was it? Three years ago, we totally, we totally dismantled our road rebuilding uh, budget down to nothing. And I think if we go further into here into capital, we still are at nothing. So we're not even rebuilding any roads and we're asking for asphalt. And then on the other hand, we're, we're, we're being told that we got no gravel left. We need more gravel. Gravel actually is a big commodity for asphalt and maintain, you, you have to maintain roads. If you, and, and maintaining roads is actually rebuilding roads. And, uh, I'd love to have asphalt throughout this whole county, but um, we need to get back into rebuilding some roads because I'll guarantee you that one that, uh, Councilor DeHalek's talking about right now needs to be rebuilt first before the asphalt, but that's my point of view. We've got to get back to building roads.
So what direction would counselors like to give?
Cause I have one more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Talking about this road, that road, road has been rebuilt every couple of three years in, in my lifetime and nothing's ever worked with. They've used different products. You know, it's got, I'll guarantee you it's got the most, the most traffic on it, any road in the county. You know, we check with the traffic count and you know, we look at industry in that part of the area where you've got a help pack and you've got all the logging truck and now you've got, you've got the tar sands, you've got Black Pearl and Wandering River. That's, uh, that's, they're all using those roads. You know, you know, and they're just not going to stand up with rebuilding, you know, not that kind of traffic.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there any direction that council would like to give administration for this budget for rebuilding roads?
I don't know. I don't know if administration needs direction. I think they've, they, we're, we're coming back to the plan, right? We're already coming back with a plan on, on road, roads and, and.
Is that, is that the direction of council? You want us to come back with a paving plan? Um, based on the current policy or a different policy or what would you like?
No, no, but there's, there's like, there was all these traffic counts that just went across the whole county. Hopefully we've spent the money on all these traffic counts. It comes back with a plan, an, an understanding of why all these traffic comps went and, 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 and was done. Um, but I think if I remember right, there, there was some sort of plan, uh, you know, that, uh, maintenance plan for, for asphalt roads and, and, and stuff like that. So I think that's.
Yeah. Through the chair, the, the current draft policy though, or sorry, plan, 10 year plan that we're working on is associated with existing surfaced roads. Uh, there's been no plan started in relation to rebuilding gravel roads. Um, as at this point in time, and there's been no, um, I guess, serious work done on a plan for new surfacing. Uh, from our perspective, we felt that the policy might need some work. Under the current policy, the road in question wouldn't qualify. It would not be priority number one under that policy. So you probably need to do some work on the policy before, unless council says, pick that road.
What we could do if it's a topic of council, they're really interested in it. Um, and this becomes our new number one priority, which changes week to week. We're okay with that. Um, we could bring back the current policy and show you what the policies look like in other communities. So you see, our policy is very heavily weighted towards paving in the subdivisions. Is that fair? Uh, but it kind of ignores the main roads. So, but that's not a policy I'm familiar with or Director Morton, we're used to seeing policies address the main roads first, but each place is unique. Um, and if our goal here is to pave all the subdivisions first, that's fine. Uh, what we could do is bring you back some samples of other places of how they, how they prioritize hard surfacing of new roads. How's that?
Yeah.
And, and we'll show you our policy and what the policies look like from some of our competitors.
When that happens though, what do you have to drop to make that happen? Right? You have to stop doing something else that.
Well, that's two different things. I think we'd start with what our policy looks like compared to other places. So that, um, in order for us to, uh, like for example, for us to put together a pavement plan for the current one, it's basically going to be all the subdivisions that are not paved. And we'd have to have traffic counts within the subdivisions. So we'd have to go back out and do those. So that's what the policy says. Uh, and a past council adopted it and that's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Deputy Rehman's and then Councilor Callahan.
Yeah, I, I like that idea because I've, I've been, uh, for many years I've been saying that we got asphalt in place, we need to actually maintain it. And, and we do have some spots in, uh, the Basque County that, that, uh, need second lifts, need overlays. Um, we used to lay it on some chip seals every once in a while and, and, uh, but that, that isn't productive enough. We need some overlays. Um, so that plan is perfect. And I think regarding uh, any other plans, I think we need to go through a strategic plan first, right? And, and get the idea from all the council where, where their thoughts and, and, and minds actually want to go with this and, and, uh, but to look after our existing asphalt is a, is a definite definite, uh, need. So.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Callahan.
I was just going to point out, we need to be really careful with our funds, especially when you're just going to be throwing down asphalt and whatever. Um, I'm from Ward nine. Um, there's our problem road has been rebuilt. There has been pavement put on it and putting it in air quotes. If you don't have the money to maintain it, trust me, it falls apart. It causes a bigger issue. It's putting a Band-Aid on something that's just going to bleed through. So I think we need to be really careful looking into that.
Thank you. Councilor Chisen. Fair enough. Um, but we do need to take a look at new projects, new pavements. So we need to go forward with the plan on that. We haven't done anything in three years. That's, that's not acceptable either as a county. So I think we need something to be proactive. I'd also like to point out to just, um, uh, when we look at it, this council, uh, the prior council, um, as you mentioned, we had a little bit of a stoppage on, on road building. But when we keep looking back in history, these roads that we're referring to have been coming to councils for decades, right? So they haven't been able to get through the budget with being able to pave them as well. So it's some, it's a bit of a magic trick that we're going to try and figure out how to do that. But we, I'm, I'm also on board with, we have to also make sure that what we've got as existing is functioning. But please go ahead, Councilor Hall and then Councilor Stasia.
So a couple of different things that are maybe a little disconnected, but um, I don't think it's fair to make the comment, we haven't done anything. It's, it's council made a conscious choice to fix bridges. And, and that maybe was, you know, we can debate whether it's the right choice, wrong choice. That's the, we, we need to respect the decision that the past made. Just like the council before and the council before. If we don't like it, it's our choice to change policy. But surely we can't undo what occurred in the past. Cause if we could do that, there'd be lots of things we'd all go back and fix. I really want to bring us back to the idea that we have to sit down together and talk about level of service. We have to talk about what is the level we want to, to deal with. We have to maintain what we've got. As, as a colleague has said, and, and a plan, and the first thing we need to maintain before we start spending, you know, five cents on asphalt is we have to maintain the gravel we've got. Like we're, we're not, I don't know if I've been getting different emails than everybody else, but it doesn't seem like we're doing a brilliant job of that right now based on the, the, you know, what we're seeing in the budget. We're asked, being asked to increase our, our, uh, gravel program to catch up on that. And that's part of a plan. I, I do think we have to get together, have a bigger plan and, and work on looking after, if you want to leave your mics off till we're all done.
It just helps me signal it. Yeah.
It, you can put your mic off Chuck, because it makes sense. We can't hear when they're all come on. And we have to be able to pay for it. And what I've heard from the experts this end, gravel to start with is the first and most important thing we can afford to, it's the cheapest. And, uh, I don't think we all need a reminder, there's a significant tax appeal that we have to remember could affect our budget in a, in a whopping way. So this, like, there's a lot of stuff in here. We're not going to get 2026's budget perfect for everybody's want. We have to use it as a tool to move forward on the direction that the council wants to go. And then really spend the time focusing on, um, how we define level of service and our collective plans and what we, what, how we want to elevate and bring the county forward over the next 12 months. But it's not a discussion that's going to occur between November 13th and the day this budget gets approved because our admin team simply, I don't think has the resources to make all that happen. If we start talking about new policy and all of that. And I really look forward to a day when we can sit around on a, a workshop type meeting and, and talk through how do we, how do we find the right balance on new policy that, um, that meets those needs of industry and of, of residents. And and that's, uh, I mean, to me, that's one of the most important things we do. And in my view, I mean, the 2027 budget starts in March of 2026. We need to be having those discussions.
Thank you, Councilor Dela. Well, I'm sorry, pardon me. Councilor Stasia was online and then you're, you'll, you'll next. I apologize.
Got a quick question for you. Whereabouts is this road? Is, and how is it or where is it in relation to a highway? Like I'm not, I, I've heard all about this road, but I really don't have any idea where it is. So what my point is, is I'm wondering if it couldn't be integrated into a like six, or yeah, sixty three going up north. Uh, integrated through a provincial government process, maybe they would take it over and say, okay, well, because there's such heavy traffic going to McMurray or wherever it goes, maybe they'll take part in this, in this thing and make, that would make the picture a little different for you.
Well, that's, um, that's what I've often said is why aren't we collaborating with the other municipalities and government and, and trying to get, uh, get some funds together, uh, and, and as far as priorities and stuff. Well, where, where, where was council the last three years, the last 10 years? Shouldn't have we, we have been working on some of this stuff instead of just getting rid of our road building program. Uh, we, we should have never done that. We should have been looking ahead back then. Uh, and now we come to a point where things have to be done and, uh, we're still going to be postponing projects like that. Not right to me.
Um, I think you also have to understand where we're at with our bridge program. And so when we're looking at our bridge program, um, we have a, that's another conversation that we'll be having to bring you all speed as well. Um, and as Councilor Hall had mentioned, there's been a lot of work done on bridges in, in this last, uh, term, uh, because it was absolutely necessary to do so. And again, we're only dealing with a certain amount of a budget, but it'll come, it'll come to, to, to light when we sit down and actually get the full three sixty of, of all the issues.
Well, just, just one more comment. We're talking about bridges. We're going to lose a $5 million bridge minimum if we don't get that road fixed. Because people are, and big trucks are bypassing that road and going across the yellow bridge. That's pretty soon, you know, going to need some maintenance. You know, we're, we're going to be saving five, $5 million minimum uh, by saving that bridge if we don't do that road. Cause that bridge is not going to last too much longer.
So I guess then the question becomes is when do we start restricting what type of traffic around these roads? And where, if they're bypassing other main roads to use these roads, at what point do we sit down and say, maybe we should be considering road, uh, certain restrictions on these roads?
Well, I don't know how you're going to stop big logging trucks and big tankers, uh, you know, it's their route.
Is it their roots or their shortcut?
Well, it's not, it's not for us to decide. The trucks are on that route.
Well, I, I, I think we can make those decisions. Um, and if it saves the roads and the expense to allow for a safer passage, then maybe that's something we do look at in the short term. There's, there's all kinds of things that we can, can look at there. But again, that's for a strategic planning conversation. Um, does anybody else have anything else that they would like to bring into road construction on the budget? Okay. We will definitely be having that conversation again. I know that. All right. So on page 193, we're at waste management. Is there anything there anyone would like to discuss? All right. We are moving to page 195 on wastewater services, Councilor Hall.
Waste management. So do we, it would be good and nice if we, um, whether it's, you know, multiplex or waste commission. These are fairly significant spends. It would be nice to see these boards come and maybe present some point to council, whether it's year end stuff or, or a budget, but the, the, the waste management's, you know, again, big jump and just to be, it would be, I guess I, I'd be interested to know kind of what's baked into that and what their plan is to, like if, if they have a plan to to, to, to minimize it or.
Are you asking for a report from the committee or?
Yeah. And I, I know, again, I can't speak to waste management. I know on the multiplex agenda certainly is a, a discussion item that would sort of make it a standard practice to, once the year end is done, to show up and present the financial statements. You're kind of the way the libraries do and, and because it's, it's a, you know, it's one of our biggest single checks that the county writes is to, to that rec facility. And, uh, so I just, you know, as we're looking at this and I didn't work out the percentage, but there's another healthy jump and we started adding forty, fifty thousand bucks a line item here and there. And it, it adds up pretty fast. And we've just kind of come through a discussion talking about how do we increase our maintenance? I don't know. I, for me, where are the places we can? I don't know. I, for me, where are the places we can tighten up a little bit and?
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We're on page one ninety-five for wastewater services. Is there anything there anyone would like to discuss? We move to one nine, page one ninety-seven for water supply. Is there anything here anyone would like to discuss?
Yes, the five hundred thousand.
That's the buying of the water, I take it.
I'll get referred to administration credit.
Correct. That's cost of the water from the commission.
What line are you on?
Okay. Everyone's clear there? Go ahead, please, Council, Deputy Reed Minz.
Well, and that, you know, and I'm, I'm just gonna be the bearer of great news here. That, that line's gonna go up. Because our, our water, water prices are going up from the commission. So that'll be another discussion this council's gonna have to have later on is on water rates.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's coming. So, it was your age, see? It wasn't. Going from four thirteen to four thirty-five. Yeah. So, you know, it, it doesn't sound like much, but it's going up. So, so what do we charge right now in Collington? Four twenty-four. So we can't even make money there. So the, the, that is a long conversation we're gonna have.
Absolutely.
Hopefully short, but it'll probably long.
And it'll be a conversation for the water rate by law, for sure. Um, and I believe sooner than later probably would be better. Yeah. To bring everybody, there's a lot of components that we, we need to bring everybody up to speed on for sure. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to discuss water supply? And then we move into our capital projects on page two oh one. Anybody like to weigh in on this one? Yeah, I know it's difficult to read on this, uh, uh, the, the tiny print here, but does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss for capital projects? We do have, um, as you see on page two oh two and two oh three, the five-year capital plan. And of course there's the budget change request forms that explain it all. Well, not all of it, but some components of it. Pretty quiet, but please go ahead, Deputy Reed Minz.
Our greater replacement program, that has not changed, right? That's still, our graders are warranted for five years, eight thousand dollars.
No, that will be changed. So we're looking at purchasing, uh.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, through the chair to Deputy Reeve Hall, or, uh, Minz, sorry. So we will be changing, uh, our greater purchase practices. Uh, we will be buying the additional warranty and moving to ten thousand, uh, seven years, ten thousand hour warranty. Yeah, uh, right now we're finding we are exceeding the hours and so we get outside of, uh, the warranty. And quite frankly, replacing the graders every five years. We, we need to come up with a way to be more, uh, I guess, efficient in our budget management. So one of the things that we're looking at is a seven-year replacement and buy the extra warranty.
Okay, no, that sounds good. Um, I don't have any problem with that because as long as we're, we're matching, matching it up with warranty and years of service and that, cause I don't wanna, we worked, uh, uh, we worked long and hard trying to get our greater fleet on and, and, and to keep it on warranty. Every once in a while, I remember I used to hear some councilor say, well, we should be running them way past and we should be owning it or taking them off the warranty end. And it's like, that's not a good idea. Keep them on the warrant at the end and perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Stasia.
Is there a, a guaranteed buyback on these graders when we trade them?
Through the chair, um, no, that was a program that CAT had, um, you know, you can still get it. Um, not sure it's the best option at this time. Uh, probably a better option is pitting them against each other for taking our, uh, replacements. So, uh, we, we get a guarantee from multiple, uh, like CAT, John Deere, and even the auction facilities, uh, to see who will guarantee what. Um, so that's kinda how.
I was just mentioned. Mostly concerned that, uh, by warranting them longer, we're keeping them longer, their value is going down. Is that making any difference?
Uh, through the chair, it, it probably has some up, effect that it's two years older, um, but it still has warranty. And most people, municipal graders are still pretty desirable on the market as they know they're well maintained. They're not typically abused, right? They're for road maintenance. They're not out doing heavy construction. Um, so they're, they're pretty desirable still, uh, even at the ten thousand hours. So I, I don't think it's a, when you look at the cost of ownership and moving it there to the seven and ten, you know, it gets us out of a scenario where we have to buy three or four some years, right? To stay on our schedule. By going and changing our schedule of replacement, it allows us to get back to a two a year. Or other than our construction grader, right? Which somewhere it's gotta fit into the twenty-year capital plan. But, you know, that's a once every ten years or so, you're gonna have three. On an average year, by going to the seven, uh, year and ten thousand hour warranty, we can get back to only purchasing two graders a year.
Go ahead, please, Council Hall.
Just, I wonder, when I look at LGFF and the, you know, the one point nine million dollars a year that we are projecting to come in. And then, um, you know, when I was, I guess the greater replacement program came up, is there a chance that we can eventually move away from using LGFF to fund graders and start funding them based on, um, you know, the depreciation, like as we're wearing them out, setting money aside to replace them into a reserve? Cause I, I, I'm not sure that it's a wise philosophy to rely on a government check. And I know it's kind of moving money around from one pot to another, but if we're able to then take LGFF, we can clearly say that's capital money. We're gonna, you know, invest that in, in roads and, uh, other things we want. But I just, I don't, um, I, I like what I'm hearing about the greater piece, the replacement from the perspective that it's what, it creates a one-time cash flow boost. This is what's gonna happen. The, the, the year you make the switch, you get a, you get a, your cash flow changes. But after that, I mean, I think it's still important that we're, we're planning for that one in ten-year replacement by setting a little bit of a tenth of what we expect to come up aside every year so that we're doing more long-term planning and, you know, small incremental bits of money going into pots that plan for these big expenses later. Rather than getting to that one in ten-year and saying, okay, now this is the year we've gotta, I don't know, not eat lunch or juggle something else around to make it happen.
Hey, thank you. Good point. Anybody else? So are we done talking about our capital plan, folks? And our budget for today, as, um, we do have a recommendation here to, uh, that council reviews the operating capital budgets and recommends changes for further deliberations at the December eleventh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Um, I think that there probably will be some requests for decisions coming in so that they will be prepared, uh, to bring that forward. Um, if people choose to do that for the November twenty-seventh meeting, um, that gives, uh, administration a bit of time before December eleventh. Um, if that's something of any of interest, go ahead, please, Council Hall.
I just wonder about the wisdom of asking admin to look at, like, I know, you know, that the C O's teams worked hard to be mindful of the, the stuff that's here. Um, wh- what if, what if the tragic happens and, and some of these tax appeals are, are successful? What's the plan? And I wonder, is there, should we ask for a briefing, closed session, maybe next time on? Um, what would admin recommend? We have to, what, what are the, what are the backup plans if something like that happens? And I don't know if that's realistic, so I'm, I'm not making a motion. I'm floating it for the C O's response.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, when you mention that, I had a discussion with a staff person yesterday about this topic. Um, if, uh, we had a loss of revenue of a big amount, um, what would you do? Well, you, first of all, we've got a pile of services. We did a service level review. We figured out we've got a hundred sixty-six at least services. Um, you categorize those, which are the ones that the, you're legislated to do. You can't stop doing them. Those go in one category called essential. You can't touch it. You could change how you do them, but you can't stop doing them. And then there's a whole basket of services we do called discretionary. We've chosen to do them. Um, you're allowed to play with those. You don't have to keep doing them. And so if you lost a whole bunch of revenue, that's probably where you would start. And then there's a whole bunch more. There's a third category called darned important. They're discretionary, but you can't stop doing them. I'll give you an example. Fire departments. Nowhere in any act does it say you must have a fire department. But it's darned important to your community, so you can't stop doing it. So, yeah, there's an exercise to do if the worst happens. And we could do that. And then you would at least know, okay, there are some services that I didn't know we still do, and maybe it's time to relook at those.
Yeah, Council Hall.
And so follow, following up on that, I, I wonder, you know, if the other benefit of doing that might give us a chance to have that discussion, then where we could say, you know, let's, let's go down that path and maybe we do those things, we make those changes anyway to free up cash for road maintenance. My thing is we can't just keep adding to the budget. You know, people were hurt this year by the change we made with the assess, the, the assessment change was the right change. There's like, I will never apologize for that, but it still hurt lots of us financially. And we need to, uh, I, I think we have to do that. And, and so maybe we could get to a place as a group where we're, I admit, we're not gonna have a full budget nailed down by December thirty-first, but we're gonna look to what do we stop doing that we really don't need to do or do differently so that we can focus more money on this other stuff? Cause I'll, my, I would put the change in my pocket at least on the fact that if we gave admin the opportunity to go away for five minutes and come back with a couple of projects, they could do it. Um, I think there's lots of work to do and I just, I, I feel like we're, and we, we really need to make the steps that are, uh, demo- demonstrable steps toward that maintenance improvement.
Okay, thank you. Are we good, folks? So I know there'll be further discussion as well, and I'll just mention a couple of other items that will probably be coming back for conversation, and that will be, uh, minimum tax as well as, uh, the cap levy and snow plowing. So these are some other areas that, uh, we'll have a conversation about as well. Um, that, yeah, snow plowing. Um, they've heard a lot of, a lot of, um, concern coming forward, of course, from residents with regards to these items that I've mentioned, uh, minimum tax, uh, cap levy and snow plowing. So it, we have to do our justice as well to our residents as in bringing their concerns to the floor. So we'll have those conversations as well. All right. So I think if we're going to move off of budget for today, um, it's definitely gonna stay at the forefront, I'm sure for everybody. And, um, as we will be coming back on December eleventh. So thank you very much, administration. I really appreciate your time and your efforts and your conversation here today. Um, do we have a motion or somebody like to own the motion for the recommended, recommended motion? Council Stasia would like to move that council reviews the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty operating capital budget and recommend changes for further deliberations at the December eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? One, so it's six and one. Thank you. We are moving on to eight point one A, the community event calendars. Um, not sure, just hang on, I gotta get organized here. Bear with me. Eighty-nine, twenty. Was there any additions or conversation for eight? I believe the person has left that had that information that they wanted to bring forward. And I don't see them. Oh, I do here. Apparently there is a cancellation on November fifteenth for the Atmore Christmas. Um, November fifteen, ten AM, Atmore Christmas is canceled. So there's that one. Is there any other further for the event calendars? May I have a motion to receive as, uh, discussed? Council Callahan, thank you to receive the, um, event calendars as discussed. All those in favor? And are there any opposed? Thank you, seven and oh. We move to the meeting calendars, eight point two. Um, I'll just make one quick change here. The regional collaboration meeting on November twentieth has been moved to the twenty-seventh of November. And I believe on Council Chamzick, there is a cancellation for the Northern Lights on November seventh. That meeting has been canceled. November seventh, Northern Lights. Okay. Is there anybody else for meeting calendars? But is there anything you needed to clarify? Council Chisen, no? Okay. Anybody else? Deputy Reed Minz.
Uh, December eighth, we have a, uh, waste commission meeting.
Okay, waste commission time?
Uh, it'd be nine thirty here in the office.
Nine thirty. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Last, probably till, stop for lunch.
They, they mentioned at our F C S S meeting, uh, or thank you. Um, they mentioned at the F C S S meeting that conflict and that we might be meeting over at the F C S S office that day instead. Okay. They are, they were gonna send that out once it was confirmed.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. We don't have a double booking. Anybody else for meeting calendars? I know that I have a couple in my email, so I'll fire them off, uh, once I find them. But other than that, if I can get a motion to receive calendars as Council Hall would like to receive the calendars as discussed. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seven and oh, thank you. And I think if I am not mistaken, we have completed all items of the agenda and we can adjourn this meeting at two eleven. Thank you all for attending.